Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner? Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Reynolds and all of your family, come on up.
You're okay. Thank you.
When do you know the mayor is excited for pictures, I tell ya.
Here Jessica, why don't you grab it over here? Yeah, get the Sulan Christian A.D. up here and you guys come up. Alright, we have a special commendation today whereas John Reynolds is a student at Sulan Christian who embodies the school mission of worship, servant hood, leadership, and living a life of excellence. And whereas John has served as a beacon of hope for all athletes through his hard work and dedication to his sport, team, and school. And whereas John has brought home Sulan Christian School's first track state team title by winning the shot put, the 100 meter, the 200 meter, and the 400 meter in the paraambulatory division. And whereas John's commitment to his team and school has created a lasting legacy at Sulan Christian where his humility and leadership will be remembered for many years to come. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend John Reynolds for his accomplishments.
There we go.
Thank you for the award.
Of course. Great job.
Yep. Okay, we will go to interviews. Tyler Cruz, Airport Board, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Airport Board.
Okay, I would like to serve on the Airport Board. I've been a pilot for five years now and so had a love of aviation for as long as I can remember. My dad got me into it way back when, when I was little. He used to always go to the airport, watch air shows, watch airplanes. I've been flying with him. He's had his license for twenty-ish years. So, just always been interested, got my license, got my instrument rating, so I do quite a bit of flying. My plane's stationed down at Sioux Gateway Airport. Heard of the opening and so I've served on numerous nonprofit boards in the past so I have quite a bit of experience with that. And so I just thought I'd be with my love of aviation as well as experience with that and also my career. I've been working at Cruz Financial Group for the last ten years as a financial advisor. So, mesh all that together, I thought it'd be a pretty good fit for you guys.
And your dad's not on the board anymore?
He's rotating off.
And yeah, I was gonna ask if you was planning on reapplying and you guys were gonna have a head-to-head battle for it or what?
That would be fun. No, I think he did his two terms so he has to rotate off for a year so he kinda kicked it to me.
I got you.
It'd be a great thing for me to look at.
I appreciate you're making the application Tyler and you have some big shoes to fill.
I've heard that a few times in my life.
If you know what I mean, yeah, you hear that all the time, don't you?
Last ten years of working with him.
Well, I think you'll be up to the task so, yeah, you will be.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks ma'am.
Scott Plambeck.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve. I think I know why, but go ahead.
Scott Plambeck, pretty much been a lifelong resident of Sioux City. I was in the 185th Air Refueling Wing, Tactical Fighter Wing, and Tactical Fighter before that so for about thirty-eight years in the military. And I've owned my own airplane before, found out how fun that was and also expensive. I've been on a bunch of different community boards, all non-city related. I've been on safety and security meetings when I was on the Air Guard, Chief of Safety, and I currently still attend those meetings visually or virtually, I should say, on and off again. I've just been on boards before. This is an opportunity for me to continue my service to the community.
Experience and expertise.
I hope that does come in, not a hindrance.
I'm glad you made the application. We have two vacancies and so it'd be nice to fill those out before the end of the month.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Oh, great, thanks Scott, good to see you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Angela Durant, Transit System Advisory Board.
Hello? Yeah, Angela Durant, resident of Sioux City, currently serving on the Transit Board. I'd like to continue, I think we've made some great progress. We know that public health, this is an important part of the public health system. People rely on it for their vitality and for their recreation and every transit trip starts and ends with a walking trip and so any ways that we can look at increasing accessibility and making it easier for people to access the system, I think is extremely important. So, I'd like to continue to serve.
I'd like to have you continue to serve too. You've done a great job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, keep it.
Really appreciate your advocacy, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go through the consent agenda which is three through fourteen E. It can constitute a consent agenda. You can consider the items unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item that I'm reading, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up at the end under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the May 27 City Council minutes. Four is a resolution supporting an IEDA application to the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program for tri-state real estate development. Five is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept a proposal of tri-state real estate development and scheduling a hearing, property at 615 and 625 Douglas Street. Six are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of intent to request release of funds and authorizing the mayor to execute a request for release of funds and environmental review and assessment related to the main overlooked project. B is a resolution accepting emergency and innovative housing fund grant agreement with Iowa Finance Authority to develop and launch a homeless court program. C is a resolution approving a contract amendment to the certified local government grant and state historic preservation office to extend the project end date and final report due date for archaeological investigations of War Eagle Park and campground sites. D is a resolution authorizing an application for an airport terminal program grant to FAA to fund Gate Two Passenger Boarding Bridge Project. Seven are actions relating to bonds. A is a resolution authorizing a form of interim loan and disbursement agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority, authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of sewer revenue capital loan notes application project note series 2025. B is a resolution authorizing a form of loan agreement and providing for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes series 2025A and amending the levy of taxes to pay said notes, approval of the tax exemption and continuing disclosure certificates. C is a resolution authorizing the form of loan agreement and providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation capital loan notes series 2025B and amending the levy of taxes to pay said notes and approval of the continuing disclosure certificate. A are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with South Sioux City. B is a resolution approving a contract for transportation service Sergeant Bluff. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to safe slide restoration for the Riverside Pool slide.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions for Matt Salvatore. Matt? How old is that equipment now?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Those are the original slides to the pool which was built in 1993.
Ninety-three. Will this have any impact on the pool season?
No, the slide will be restored after the pool season.
And they'll have that done by?
October 1st.
October?
Yep.
Okay, thank you Matt.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that slide after we're done. E is a resolution.
It better have been about the inaugural time you went down and just like Dan went down Cone Park.
No, it has nothing to do with that. E is a resolution approving change order number one to the contract with Subservco for the Gordon Drive Storm Sewer Repair Project need to abstain conflict of interest. E is a resolution approving a pre-construction agreement with IDOT to repair flood damage on I-29 over the Big Sioux River. F is a resolution approving First Amendment to the site lease agreement with Pegasus Towers for the installation, operation, and maintenance of a communication system at 1200 South Maple Street. G is a resolution approving Amendment Number One, excuse me, to the service provider agreement with Lane Christensen Company for the Well Eight Rehab Project. H is a resolution approving a second renewable five-year extension on the promissory note and loan issued to Green Valley Floyd Golf Corp. I is a resolution approving a contract to RP Constructors for the South Apron Reconstruction Project at the airport. Nine are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution approving the fiscal year 25 to 28 wage reopen with the Professional Firefighters Association, Local Seven, International Association of Firefighters for years three, four, and five of the Collecting Bargain Agreement and Salary Schedule. Go ahead.
Janelle Bertrand, Resources Director. I wanted to point out that on the RCA, under one of the bullets, there was an error but in your packet with the attachments, the information is correct. Specifically, if you want to look at, one, two, three, four, the fourth bullet down in the RCA, it discusses an ad pay for those lieutenants and captains who have an EMT and a paramedic license. The RCA indicates seventy-five cents for EMT and a dollar fifty per paramedic but actually the agreement is a percentage. So, I wanted to point that out to you. And if you look in your homework, the documents attached are correct.
Correct.
And reference the percentage. Thanks.
Thanks, Janelle.
B is a resolution approving the fiscal year 25, 26 wage reopen with the Amalgamated Transit Union 779 for year three of the Collecting Bargaining Agreement and Salary Schedule. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Sioux City Engineering for the Perry Lane Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution approving change order number one and authorizing payment to KP Construction for the Big Sioux River Gate Four Repair Project. C is a resolution approving partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. Purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to CDW Government for purchase of desktops. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Southern Computer for the purchase of monitors, desktops, laptops, and docking stations. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Caltech for police vehicle add-on equipment. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Grove's Emergency Lighting Installation for police vehicle add-on equipment. E is a resolution authorizing interim city manager to purchase Cone Mountain Bike Park General Liability Insurance from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management. F1 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Striker Sales for ambulance equipment. F2 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Striker Sales for two LifePak 35 Monitor DFIB units. Twelve are applications for cigarettes, tobacco, nicotine vapor product permits. Thirteen are applications for alcohol license. And fourteen are board commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items.
I need to abstain on item thirteen, B1A, conflict of interest.
Passes four to zero. Fifteen's a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions of May 13, 2025. I'll move that.
Second.
Give me one second to get that set. There it is.
Passes four to zero. Sixteen's an ordinance declaring, dedicating and naming a portion of the unnamed right-of-way adjacent to 423 South Ruston Street is South Ruston Street. The petitioner is the City of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Oh, sorry, sorry Heidi.
Passes four to zero. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Seventeen's an ordinance dedicating and naming a portion of the unnamed right-of-way adjacent to 423 South Ruston Street is Washington Avenue. The petitioner is the City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four to zero. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move it.
Second.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Second and third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Scott?
Eighteen's a hearing on the United States Housing and Urban Development Sioux City Consortium Consolidated Plan and Year One Action Plan. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution approving a conduit and fiber cable mass release agreement allowing long lines to, the right to install, use, and maintain a portion of the city-owned conduit along Mitchell Avenue, Ogden Avenue, in exchange for the city's use of a portion of the conduit owned by long lines along Boulevard of Champions and the Seaboard Triumph Parkway. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Twenty's a hearing and resolution approving the proposal to sell property in the area of Omaha, Lindenwood, West 35th Street, and authorizing a city deed. The petitioner is Wade Allen Heineman. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Twenty-one's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the Hitting Factory for the purchase of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and approving of development agreement and minimum assessment agreement. The property at 600 Expo Center Drive. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Citizen concerns, please come up and state your name for the record, please. Anyone to be heard on it, come on up.
Good evening, guys.
Aye.
Guess why I'm here again? Sounds like we've got a big rain coming tonight. And the drainage ditch I've brought to your attention, I haven't heard anything about whether or not we're gonna be able to get that obstruction removed.
Well, Julie was supposed to call you because she called me and said that they're not gonna move it and I said, "Well, you better call the gentleman and let him know that." So, that's, Gordon, what's the update then? I thought, I...
Haven't heard from Gordon, hadn't heard from Julie. But we're gonna get a pretty stiff rain tonight if the forecast bears through. And I think it's gonna show anyone who wants to come out and look just exactly why that thing is there. Now, I've had people over the years, you know, compliment me on the things I've done to the house. I've had people compliment me on a drainage dish. Why that was even put in a drainage dish, I'll never understand. Now, if we could just turn the clock ahead till the end of February and we get a rain like tonight, we're gonna have a huge problem. Someone's gonna get electrocuted, whether it be a mailman, whether it be a FedEx guy, whether it just be a student getting out from school.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Cable One was, Spark was invited. He is here, you wanna come on up?
Could you please, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, state your name for the recording and the record.
My name's Keith Barron, I live at 1304 29th Street.
Thank you.
In the middle of an extensive remodel.
Now, I do have some pictures here online, just so you guys can look at them.
I bet.
Yep.
Okay, give me one second.
Just so everybody's aware, that's all. Right here is the picture. This is Keith's house right here.
Yep.
This is the property line, here's the box. This is just in relation to the property line or the right-of-way line, I'm sorry. It's approximately, if you look right here, this is where Keith's drainage comes out from the backyard. And this box is, well, four feet, two inches away. And two foot seven from this wall. So, I'm gonna go back. There it is.
Go back to that picture.
Yeah, the water comes, I will. The water comes from his backyard, underneath his fence, along that and it will come out through that little opening in the wall, we'll call it. So, which picture? This one?
Yeah, is that, we're, so those block, not that I'm gonna tell them, change it, but are those block in the right-of-way then? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, they are actually.
I don't, that doesn't matter, but I...
Correct, yeah.
Those blocks are, and that's not really the ones in question.
No, I know, I just asked.
It's more this, this one here, Keith's worried about water coming off here, hitting this, and getting up, here's the electrical panel.
But there's electrical in that box, isn't there?
Yes. I don't know the details of it, I'm not...
Well, I don't know how you can't, Julie says, "Well, water can't get in there" but those are louvers to let whatever's in there breathe. The water certainly can get in there.
That is correct. Maybe water can get in there, they are somewhat, so water can get in there, Mayor, because it is vented for, for...
Yeah.
But the actual, the power supply unit's about this big. It sits on the top, but it's on a shelf at the top. We had these things in North Sioux, all over in North Sioux, and during that flooding, they, water rose up to almost halfway up those things and they all functioned just fine. Services stayed on. So, water is not...
Why do you have that?
I'm sorry?
Why didn't you put it underground?
Those can't be underground, that's, it's...
What is it?
So, when the, when the city came to us and they said, "Okay, you know, we're going to be redoing 29th Street" and so they said, "You need to move all of your lines." And so we had an engineering, our engineering side of the business came in and they re-engineered everything. We put a fiber optic node for our fiber on that pole. So, the reason that place was chosen is there was power available. It was in the right-of-way and it worked for the, for the design that we had to feed that entire neighborhood. In my opinion, I don't think water is going to affect that thing in any way. You know, when we put it in, we put it in the right-of-way. We made sure that it was all to code. And I, it's just not going to, it's just not going to affect it. Now, I know that Keith has, has a different opinion with him. I talked with Keith the other day for, I don't know, forty minutes.
You know, guys, I not only have a different opinion, I've got an awful lot of experience living there. Now, there's gonna be water coming out of my backyard tonight. You're right on that. But there's gonna be water coming off that big tall hill and everything too. Tonight, if it rains, anything like they say, and hails and everything, there's not just gonna be water, it's gonna be silt. And you know, like I told you guys earlier, that's where Lou Parsons and I put our snow every winter. Now, that street a little bit wider, that gives us just a little bit less place to put snow. So, about every third winter, that gets about eleven feet deep, tops, in there. And then, of course, there's snow up there and when we get that big rain in March and everything and that water backs up, comes into the basement, who's gonna take care of that basement for me after get through with the remodel this year? That's a big fat obstruction there and I don't care how you describe it and what it looks like out in Riverside, it's gonna cause me nothing but consternation. And I tell you what, when the basement floods, you're gonna be hard to get on the phone and so is everybody else here.
I think that power supply is closest, is close enough and going to get much, much closer to the road.
There's other places on that street you can put that thing.
But it is in the right-of-way.
This should have been addressed last March when I brought it up. Instead, as soon as I brought it up, you guys went out there and hooked everything up quick and said it couldn't be moved. I beg to differ. I've worked construction an awful lot of years. We've had to move stuff way bigger than that because it made sense. And there ain't nothing wrong with making sense.
One of the biggest issues with that power supply is, you know, we called, we made sure that this was okay. And we put it, we put it in according to code and you know, that's what the right-of-way is for. And I understand Keith's point, I really do. And I'm not a hard guy to work with. And the problem is, is that to, if I wanted to move that thing, you're looking at our cost just, just to move it, is $2,500 to reset the power supply and $1,300 to rewire. And that's with our contract that we use Lewis Electric and then Mid-America. So, you know, and that's just minimum. That's none of our labor that we'd have to have crews out there to do all the stuff that we have to do.
It's gonna be worth it all over the long haul so you don't get sued or anything.
Let him finish.
I apologize.
Now, if I thought that it was, that it was absolutely going to be a major issue, I would move it because I've, I've got, you know, a couple thousand customers off that power supply and the last thing that I want is for it to, you know, for it to fail. I can't have it. So, I don't want it to fail. Now, I did tell Keith on the phone, I said, "Look, I mean, we'll take a look at it and let's, let's just see what hap, let's look at it. And if it needs to be moved, I'll move it." You know, if it absolutely needs to. The problem is, is you know, we already paid all this once to redo all this line and redo all this and we finally got it done and now we're being asked to incur a double cost, pay it twice, to move it. And, you know, I know he has a different, a different thought on it and I, and I respect that but I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
A question about what you proposed, because I did read through the email but it sounds like you proposed to have blocks around it? Is that correct, or raise it up?
No, when Keith, when I found out, and I know Keith says that we weren't responsive, but that's not true. So, I'm a, my name is Mike Derhod, I'm the Senior Regional Director for Sparklight. I run seven states. I live here in Sioux City, always have, well, have for about eight, nine years. But my office manager's also a regional director and has the same number of states. So, we are out of the office from time to time but I never saw anything come across my desk that said, "Hey, give Keith a call." Because I would've. Now, if I would've heard about this earlier, we probably could've moved it but the problem is now, we've got a basin there, we've got, everything is done, it's hooked up to power, it's running. So, that doesn't even cost our... So that doesn't even cost, or include the cost if we would have to move that fiber optic node that's above that thing. There's a whole nother redesign, and that doesn't even include that in that roughly four grand without labor costs. So, but again, I mean, I don't have a problem with, with seeing how things go and, and, and let's look at it. And if we have to move it down the road, we will. You know, I, it's below the house, I don't think it's going to back water up, especially if the water's coming over that, those blocks. It's not going to fill up past those blocks and run back uphill.
Imagine February after a snowy January.
I think one thing you're going to see, though, Keith, that is probably not a bad thing, having that thing under snow is not going to hurt anything in it, right, in the winter.
I've been with reputable construction companies for close to forty years, and we were trained to spot problems become the, before they become an issue.
You're saying it will melt that snow?
With Martenson or Clamner. They'd take one look at it and say, I'd probably get a safety award for the doggone thing, and then it'd get moved anyway. An ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. It ain't no, you got no business up there taking a risk on someone getting electrocuted off that deal. I don't know what it takes, it doesn't take that much.
That thing is full of circuit breakers and safety equipment, it's not going to, it's not-
I was, I, I guess that's where I'm a little confused, because I, look, I, I don't want anyone to get harmed, I don't want to worry about that electrocution or anything.
Basically flooded either, if that backs water up, and it's all full of snow there.
Let's, let me ask one question and one issue first. I was just wondering about, you know, the electrocution-
A lot of thought went into that before I put that in there.
Keith, Keith, we've let you talk, let Alex talk, come on.
Sorry, I'm just a little pee-od.
I understand, but-
And, and I'm trying to understand and talk through this with you.
Okay.
So, if you're worried about that, and I, I'm not aware of any of them, any of these units that have electrocuted or have posed a threat, and if you can show me evidence otherwise, I'm all ears. But if, if he's telling me, and he's in control of seven states of doing this, that these are implemented in an area that was just flooded and the water went up above halfway, and I guess going back in, to that photo of the front of your house, I mean, your house is at a pretty severe angle for how much higher it is. I would imagine if there's ever an event that it would get halfway up that unit, I mean, I hope someone's building an arc because it looks like that would be an incredible unit. I don't know how it could get backed up that high. So I just don't know if that's a risk.
Let me help you out here.
Okay.
That water backs up on the west side of the house when it can't flow out. That's one more obstruction. It's not only an obstruction, it's an electrical obstruction.
It's a what obstruction?
An electrical obstruction.
But he's saying that it's-
Anytime you obstruct the flow of water, it slows it down. If you get enough coming off that hill and the water's getting slow, then my basement floods.
But I don't know-
There's more than one reason here, guys.
I guess I just don't, how long has this been there, now?
Couple weeks.
They started digging it in in March, and that's when I tried to find out someone to talk to about it. I started with Sparklight. They had every imaginable excuse in the book. It's been going on since the frost is in the ground.
Yeah, I mean-
The fact that they finished it, I can understand that.
They're a public utility, kind of, sort of, they, we don't control them, but-
And, I'm just-
But they have the right to be in the right-of-way. I'm, I mean, we can't take that right-of-way that, because it, we don't even get to tell you what to do anymore because you guys didn't like us telling you what to do, so you went to the state to get a state charter, which I would have done the same thing, so.
That wasn't us, Mayor.
But there's not, not much-
And that's just it, is that's the only area this city has to work with. So while I can, I think, along with the mayor, I can understand your plight in that whether it's snow piling up there, which he says there isn't a risk there, I mean, it's at risk of damaging your equipment, or, you know, you damaging that equipment, which would be frustrating, I get all of those things. But that's the only space that we have, and if he's saying it's beneficial for them to be right there next to that power source, I mean, he has that right, and we can't stop him from doing that.
I'm glad it's beneficial for them, I just don't want to have to redo my basement again. There's more than one thing going on here, guys. And he's trying to say, well, I think it's going to work. I've been living there for eleven years, I don't think it's going to work. Like I told him on the phone the other day, it's not a matter of when, or if, it's a matter of when. It might take a couple of years.
You know, that's, that's kind of what he's been telling me, that, you know, it could take five, seven years, but eventually you're going to have a problem. I just don't know that that's true. I don't know that the risk is there that he thinks is there. And again, you know, one of the things that I, one of the things I did want to make sure is that, and I, and I told him this, if it does become a problem, I will move it. It's, it's in my best interest to move it, if, if that happens.
And I think you bring up a great point, Keith, that it's like, hey, if tonight is the night and it's going to be an incredible rainfall, and you have any photos or evidence that, man, the water just went halfway up that box, or-
Just seeing you guys go out and see it for yourself. That water's pretty powerful when it really comes down through there. In ordinary rain, it doesn't do anything, and he would be just fine then.
The wider shot that showed the whole front of the house?
But the last time we had one that would have given it a problem was last October. That's a little sooner than, they're usually spaced out a little further than that. Usually somewhere around a year and a half now, last October to now.
How does your fence not obstruct it, but this is going to, that's what I don't get with-
The retaining wall, well, and-
No, but it's got to come under that fence. Right?
Because you would think that's what would stop it.
You got like a big snow coming in that fills up.
No, I'm asking when it rains. The water comes through your fence.
It'll drain tonight.
How, how big is the-
Opening?
Is that opening off the ground?
Four or five inches, tops.
Well, if you have a, if, I'm sorry, but it, I'm not going to, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but it-
No.
If you got a four or five inch going there, the backup is happening to the gate. I mean, I've realized you don't want this ugly thing in your front yard, I get that.
Correct.
But who does, Bob, you know?
I, I understand that.
Look at how small that yard is.
Your gate is obstructing a lot of water coming down there. If you get water in your basement, I'd, I would hope you'd open your gate to get it out.
The block issue was basically, I, I said when, when I first found out about this, I said, well, if it's, if it's an eyesore, if that's the, the problem, I said, I'll pay to have a whole nother string of blocks brought in there around it so that you can't see it.
I don't think that's a good call either.
Well, but he's just trying to help you from, if you're saying aesthetically. But, yeah, I mean, I guess I would agree with the mayor that if there's any water that's going to go into the basement, it would probably be up level with the house rather than when it gets down to the curb level or level with the pole.
I'm trying to tell you guys, is it backs up.
The water backs all the way up from that pole, all the way up to your house.
It has. Twenty nineteen, first of March.
I would just be so amazed.
And it's not just me, it's other neighbors, too. It's a pretty good sized hill back there, goes all, all the way up to Twenty-Eighth Street. Particularly in the months of February and March when everything's froze, it's just like, like a roof.
So I had even offered, you know, what if we put bigger holes in, in the base of it? Because it's locked down, but put bigger holes so that if water did come down and come flying down there, that power supply will not hinder it at all, it'll flow right underneath it. But he didn't like that either.
Problem is, it's right in the dead center, and the water's got to divert. When the water diverts, you end up like Riverside last year.
I have a question for you. I appreciate your open-mindedness about moving it if it does become an issue. What, what are your options, though, for where you would move it?
Right up the, two houses up on the corner, there's that same pole.
You know, and then, the, the problem is, I'm going to have that same problem anywhere I go with-
Yeah.
Going to get yelled at, I'm going to get, you know, if that's the problem, and I'm sure the city deals with right-of-way issues all the time where you just have people get angry about stuff, right? It's the same thing here.
Well, I'm talking, yeah, I'm sticking to the drainage and not the, not the site, but the drainage itself.
Well, when-
I, I was just wondering what, if you had something in mind for a backup.
Not yet, not yet. But that's something we put our engineers on and figure that out, yeah.
Well, and then it's added cost, and I, I'm not a big, I'm, obviously, I'm a big fan of an ounce of prevention, you know, is worth a pound of cure, I get that. And I don't want anyone to be more at risk. But I really fail to see, this just doesn't seem probable to me at all that the water would back up to that level. And if he's saying it's not an electric, electric current threat, and it's been through a flooding system on level land like it was in Riverside in that area, I can't imagine, I mean, you're right, you are way up there. So I'm, I'm not going to speculate as to what could happen, I don't see it being a risk. He's well within his rights to be within the right-of-way. What I will tell you that I think we, as a city, need to do a better job of is if this was before and, and Sparklight was working with engineering and working with them on us getting those permits and knowing that that was on the up and up of where we were going to put this, we need to make sure that we're letting the homeowner know. I mean, yes, it's our area, it's the right-of-way, we're allowed to do work in that area. It's the reason it's there, but, you know, if, if we didn't properly alert you or if you didn't know, then, then we need to do a better job of that in the future, but.
I had no idea where to turn when I started in March, I went down to Sparklight. I got told everything but the truth. I got told to go out to DGR Engineering.
Following up on the mayor's point about the fence, how, how long are those fences? You have your fence, and then the neighbor has a fence up there, too, it looks like? How long have those fences been there?
There's a couple fences there, yeah.
Pardon?
There's two fences there.
Yeah, how, how long have those been there?
The one, the neighbor's fence, that's been there as long as I can, I've been there. I think I started my twelfth year this spring. And that their fence there that you're looking at, that was just, there was an old fence there that was crappy. We put in a new one last year. Now, we don't know if that gate's going to hold back water yet. Everything's, everything, we're, we're just trying things as we go to make sure the water flows out of there.
Well, I understand, and I appreciate that you're doing that. But I just wondered if the, with the door shut, if that's, if that's going to block the heavy, the heavy rains that would come down from up, up on Twenty-Eighth Street coming down?
It ain't going to block the summer rains. Or I might get into trouble is in the wintertime when there's snow there.
I'd, I'd be concerned about that, too, with the fence.
I scoop it out so I can open it up if need be. There used to be a sidewalk there, I took the sidewalk out.
Oh, so the water drains, or down, over the sidewalk?
Had to put some drop on that to give it the speed to come out. If there's a pile of snow there, I wanted to get it out far enough to where the sun was hitting stuff. As, some thought went into that, you know, we've had so many close calls over the years, then of course in twenty nineteen, we got wet. I got wet, the neighbors got wet. It used to start to the right on that picture, then cascade down. He's got a couple guys that come out and they seen some of the prevention measures I've taken over the years just to keep myself dry. So, it's, it's a work in progress, but putting something like that in the middle of the drainway just does not help, guys.
Well, there was an issue with the address that was actually on the unit itself on, and it was kind of thought that maybe that's where it was supposed to go. But the problem is when we hook up to power with Mid-America and they try, and they come to get an address, I believe from the city, I may be wrong with this.
Correct.
But what they do is, is they can't give like his address or the neighbor's address. It can't be an active address, it has to be an address that is vacant or can't be used. A lot of times, I guess, they tried to go with halves, and then that caused a problem in their billing and stuff. So, anyway, that was, that was the issue with the, with the address that was on it.
I appreciate your willingness to look into it and that if it does cause a problem, it sounds like you're willing to address that, so I trust that he'll keep you on top of if there is an issue. And I'm sure as long as you're provided evidence of such, you'll take care of those measures, so I appreciate it.
What's the threshold that is required before someone decides it should be moved?
I'd think if it backs water up. If water starts sitting in there-
Are you talking backing up a little bit, or backing up to flood the house?
To wherever it would be considered a problem, I would think.
If you can show causation that that, that is what's causing water to back up somewhere, I'm sure he will work towards relieving that.
Be a lot easier to just move now, avoid the problem.
Well, we can speculate that there will be a problem about everything we do, and at the end of the day, we have to go off of what-
Somebody should have consulted somebody before they put that in a drainage ditch. That's just common sense, guys. That's not even tough. I've had people stop by over the years and tell me I've done a good job on the place. When I bought the place, every window was broken or cracked, and two were absent in the house. Been a lot of work, been a lot of expense. We found out we had water issues, we'd done as much as we could. This doesn't anything to do, to help it.
But I don't, I've got a picture of your house in twenty twenty-two, and you didn't even have a wall there. I'm not sure a wall helps, but-
Well, that wall does a few other things, Bob. There's people that walk up there at night and they look in the windows and stuff. And if they got to walk around the wall, it makes it a little less convenient.
I get all of that, Keith, but it, you didn't have a fence in twenty twenty-two and the water could run right out. You didn't have a fence in twenty twenty-two.
We didn't have the landscaping done yet either.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. If you're, if you're going to try to, I'm not, I'm not an engineer.
No, but I think if someone would come and look at some of the things I've done-
A full gate stops a lot more than a, than that thing's going to stop.
That's why the landscaping got done, Bob.
Well, Keith, you got a gate right there. You got a gate that's going to, you don't have to be an engineer to know that that's going to impede the flow of water out of your backyard.
There's a dip in the ditch where the water collects and pushes out.
If you only got six inches under there, guess what, only six inches of water gets out. It's a dam.
Helps a heck of a lot.
What?
Helps a heck of a lot.
It's a dam.
It gets it out to the edge of the street, there's more sunlight.
Listen, I get, you don't like that in your front yard, I don't blame you.
Bob, have I ever complained about it in my front yard?
I said, you don't like that in your front yard, that piece of equipment, I get that because you did a nice job of landscaping.
I want water to run, too, Bob.
Okay, well, I don't think, they're within their, their rights. You'll, you'll be getting named in the lawsuit as well as us, I'm sure, if he does get his basement flooded, which I hope he doesn't. But we can order them to do something unless you guys all want to come up with the money.
Can't you guys help them out a little bit? Because the city gave them the okay to put it there.
The city gave them the okay to put a box there because we're doing a street project. It's like Mid-America, we can't tell them where to put their underground junction boxes, they put them where that works for them.
When your basement was flooded in twenty nineteen, what, what was the cause of that? You said your basement-
Too much rain, coming off the hill. Since, since then, I've put in retaining walls, three of them. Everything got carried back there by hand. Block, rock, railroad ties.
So it slows the flow?
You ought to see it back there, it's-
It slows the flow, then?
It controls the flow much better. And then right straight back from that box, I got a berm that actually makes the water break two ways. All the waters from the neighbors come out that ditch right there.
Okay.
I'm taking their water and keeping it off my neighbor and keeping it off me. And when it comes, man, it comes. Last October, we got silt and everything out through there. Tonight's going to shape it up the same way. Maybe you're, maybe it won't bite anybody. Is it worth the risk? I don't know. Breakers fail all the time.
I don't know. I guess I'm-
Got to be, it's got to be a better place than in a drainage ditch to put something like that, guys.
Well, the problem is, everybody's getting water from up the hill in that neighborhood. And the only place it would work is on the corner, so, and I'm not sure that-
I don't-
I don't know, I don't have an answer.
Well, the problem is, if we would have known that it was a drainage ditch, we probably wouldn't have put it in there, you know? But in looking at it, it looks decorative, you know? I don't know that that, you know, appeared to us of being a drainage ditch.
When I put the wall in, strangers drove by and says, you're decorating your drainage ditch, huh? I says, well, we're trying to keep people on the street, too, and now you got a spot for criminals to hide there, too. Seriously, guys. Seriously, guys, when the snow melts in the spring, there might be a sawzall come out of there or something. It's happened before. And that's twenty-two feet from my front door. I just think there's gotta be a better solution than that to help everybody here.
Can't say we will keep an eye on it, you know, again, cause you know, I can't tell you enough that if that causes a problem with water, it causes me a much bigger problem.
Yeah.
Much, much bigger problem.
And I think the best thing to do is just to move it to that higher spot up on the corner like we talked about. Sure makes a lot of sense. No drainage problems there. And all your stuff on the high line is close enough too.
I appreciate the photos and you bringing it very much and being here.
Well, I guess we'll see what the rain does tonight. I hope you have somebody up there in the morning. All right.
Thank you.
You. Anyone else? What do we owe this honor?
No doubt.
I'm Brett Hayworth. Technically I'm from Moville, Iowa, but I spend half my day in Sioux City, so.
I was gonna say, never mind, guys, closing up shop.
Do I leave right this immediately now or?
Yeah.
I'm here to deliver. Excuse me, a compliment, catching my throat there. A compliment. Um, I was at the Trails Fest event that was held Saturday at Cone Park and I'm just here to thank, I was, I was just blown away by how great that event was, how well attended it was. And, um, it's with the new mountain bike trails and stuff that go up through the hills and such. And I just wanted to thank the council over the years for, first of all, Cone Park initially with, uh, with the snow hill and you know, how well that's been done. Now this new mountain biking, which is a thing I really love. All the stuff on the riverfront that's happened the last year and a half. I'm a big believer in quality of life pieces being a great amenities for, um, Sioux City residents, Siouxland residents. Um, and I just wanted to just thank you. Nothing more than just to say thank you for all the, you know, it's a lot of money that has been done for various grants, et cetera, and you know, whatever various fundings that you found to do that, but I just wanted to thank you for doing it. It's very well appreciated.
I'm sure Mr. Chesterman will tell you to keep drinking Coke.
Oh, yeah.
We owe him a big debt for that.
Yeah, they had a big hand in that as well, but, um, I, I, I know I saw, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alex was there, um, at the Trail Fest and it was just, Saturday, I just kept saying, I think I need to come to the city council. I have to get away from work for a few minutes, come down here and just to give you guys a compliment, so.
Thank you.
I'm glad we didn't kick you out.
Yeah.
There we go.
After I saw you, I had the worst bike wreck I've ever had in my life, so.
No, really?
If you could see this hand.
Oh, no, man.
If you could see my legs and stuff, but somehow I was laying on the ground. I was like, okay, this is what it feels like to break your arm for the first time.
Oh, no.
This was on the trail where I did a jump that I shouldn't have done.
Good thing we just bought insurance.
Yeah, no kidding. All right. We'll get it through. Nicole, yeah, did you close your ears for a while? Yeah.
Please, uh, just please hear that, you know, my very sincere compliments for all the work that you guys have done over recent years to improve that whole area.
We'll pass that on to Mr. Salvatore and his group too. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Brett. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Before we move on from citizen concerns, um, Heidi, we're, um, I wanted to ask about Mr. Burrow's comments that he'd sent to us.
Oh, last week. Yes.
Turned into a record.
Yep. So typically the process, you know, to be part of the, the public minutes, we're only putting who's speaking. Um, so we've placed it in our general files with the public record and we keep a record of that, so.
To be sure, cause.
Of course.
Muches, so.
Yes. And I did reach out to him as well, so he knows.
And I followed up with them on his ideas as well, so.
What's that?
Uh, reserving naming rights for streets for, for vets.
Well, I do too, but having, being the only guy that went through that era, how do you, of the fifty-four, I believe from Sioux City, how do you pick which one? That, that's, that's an impossible task.
And that's just it too. I, I didn't know what the process was and that's what I had said to him is I didn't know how you go about doing that, that I would be open to that. But how often do we have more and more streets to be named? And then what is the process for selecting those? And so I don't know how you make that, you know, if you just have the list, whether it's alphabetical, you get the list, whatever the dates were perhaps, you know, of their passing and then you go down that list to name them as such. And then are they able to be pronounced or easily spelled? I mean, some of those things are important to take into consideration as well. Um, I, I'm open to the idea. I just.
Talk to planning and zoning.
See what their thoughts would be.
Well, and what the ordinance. What the developer has rights to for naming.
Developer puts a four million dollar development.
That's exactly right. That's how it's got their name.
And I get, I mean, growing up and going, not having to go to Vietnam war, I'm thankful for that. And I appreciate all the people like they were gonna leave on a plane tomorrow, but I just don't know how you pick. If you had two streets next year, how do, out of fifty-four, which family do you want?
Go first.
That's the problem I got. So I just don't think there's a fair way to do it.
And Dan brings a good point too, if we have protocol and.
What else you got, Matthew?
Uh, Karen, would you like to come up? Nope. So I'm just gonna, uh, this week is, uh, well, this is Pride Month. Um, but this week is kind of Pride Week here. Um, so we've got, coming up on Thursday is the Pride Parade, if I can pull up my calendar. Um, and that staging starts at five, I believe the parade starts at six. Is that right? So, and then Friday is, uh, Pride Downtown, which is always a great event and it's always very well attended. Um, I am gonna try and make it to both of those. Being a teacher for Sioux City schools, we are still in session through Friday. So, um, still keeping office hours. Um, but then we also have Friday, our joint museum board of trustees meeting, which I am looking forward to. It's always, uh, great hearing what's new at the museum coming up, so. And then, oh, Saturday is the Siouxland Freedom Park event, south Sioux City. Dedicating. Okay? And that's it. I'm done, I promise.
You're good. Um, I just wanted to say two things even before, uh, Brett was here. Um, and it was good to see him down there on Saturday. I just wanted to really thank Parks and Rec staff as well. I went all throughout Trail Fest. I actually spent quite a bit of the day down there. Um, and really was impressed with the, not only the staff we have, but the staff we recruited to be able to work down at Cone Park. You know, we oftentimes thank, you know, our principals or the people that we work directly with, but I know they do a good job of hiring a staff down there and having them coordinate and work with them. Um, specifically, I wanted to mention Rachel Eskins. Her last day with, uh, the city of Sioux City will be coming up. Um, she's going on to other opportunities, but just wanted to thank her. I know that she had, um, probably the lion's share of coordination with this event and taking it over this year. Um, and I thought she did a great job. I thought that a lot of people were very, very happy. Um, in fact, some of the organizers wanted to me to pass along the thanks, um, to the rest of the city council, cause they're very appreciative of such a great facility. And I told them that I thought last year being the first, that it was really a great experience to kind of expose the community to what's possible. This second year, it was growing and getting even bigger. And then next year, I'm really looking forward to it. Because the, the patio project will be complete. So there's a patio project underway. In fact, they actually had workers or people there that were doing work the day of the event. And so they are really trying to get that done, should be done by this fall. Um, and that's gonna be a great addition. So I look forward to, um, just growing that event in the future, but very thankful for all the donors, the staff and people responsible for help making that possible. But just really thankful for all of them. And the last thing that I would say is, uh, there is another event on Thursday. I'm hoping that the rain holds off. We'll see what weather does, not only for the parade, but also, um, Morningside and my office specifically, we host kind of a kickoff, the summer, um, neighborhood party called Summer Vibes at Morningside. And so it's a free event for the entire Morningside community, but if anyone else wants to, um, stop out and partake, we're not checking IDs. So it will just be, um, for where you live in the city, but we'll have four different food trucks. There will be a bouncy house uh, for kids as well as Sioux City Fire and Rescue will have a rig on site. And the Sioux City Police Department will also be having, um, one of their units and some officers there, uh, to be able to show kids, um, the units and talk to them a little bit about what they do. And then we'll also have dueling pianos. They'll be performing down on the outdoor amphitheater, um, stage area. And so that should be a good time. It's from five thirty PM until nine PM this Thursday, right on the campus mall in the middle of Morningside. Uh, but if you're looking for something to do and enjoy that, we would really welcome you to come on down. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Um, July third and July fourth coming up and the discharge of fireworks. We have a long list of good things that we're doing that are in place, PSAs on television, PSAs on radio. Trying to get the word out that the only two days to discharge fireworks in the city of Sioux City is July third and July fourth. I have not seen the new legislation yet. I haven't had time to read it, uh, where cities now have to have or have to allow uh, the discharge of fireworks on those two days and New Year's Eve. But nonetheless, we're, we're getting the word out. Uh, we're gonna hold a press conference with the residents and hopefully with a, a couple of veterans. Um, and the, and the police department and the fire department to, uh, get the word out that those are the two days that are allowed. Um, I don't know about your neighborhoods, but I have already heard some fireworks going off. And, um, we, we really need to really look at enforcement if we can. Enforcement of our ordinance, uh, respect for, um, everyone involved that, that needs that respect for fireworks. And plus there are a lot of professional displays that go on, uh, during July third and July fourth that are, uh, safe to attend and, and everybody. I think the key for me is, is that everybody knows when those fireworks will go off because some of them, uh, they, they need that. They need the heads up on, those are the two days, so. Uh, but a lot of good things are happening. I checked with Ann Westra and, and she's really on top of everything, getting, getting the facts out.
Make enforcement. Hope springs eternal for you, Mr. Moore. I, I appreciate about you.
It always has, Mayor. And it'll continue, but I think we just need to keep talking about.
Little in my pocket, if you want any action on that, that there won't be a ticket written this year, but go ahead.
To follow up, we'll be bringing forward an ordinance change to just reference the state code regarding the hours that are allowed. So you'll be seeing that in the next.
Do they have hours in the state code?
They do.
Yeah. Are they one, one o'clock? Are they match up with ours? One o'clock to eleven?
Testing my memory. I think.
That's okay.
If the third falls during the week, then it's ten o'clock, but the new code says if it, if the third is on a Saturday or Sunday preceding the fourth, then it's eleven PM. So it's just slightly different than what we have right now.
Wouldn't you love to just have a story of the erosion of local control? Where local communities used to somewhat warrant what happened in their community and then now the state is gonna say, no, never mind, we know better.
Well, just anything else?
No, that's plenty for me. The fireworks every year. Um, I just hope it's a better year than past years.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye. Thank you, guys.